Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the planning board meeting. Tonight is October 10th. This is our regular meeting. I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. It's about four after seven. I think we did hear from John O'Connell. He's not coming in. And I think we have everyone else. Hi, Gary.
Hello.
No problem. All right.
Just looking back in just a little bit, please.
Yeah. Better? All right. Hold on. I'm just looking through my paper right there. Okay, the fire exits are behind you, to the right. The entrance that everyone came through and behind us, to my left. Tonight, we have a public hearing on our schedule. The public hearing actually will not be conducted tonight. The matter is Kingdom Hall, which is located on Harriman Heights Road. I understand that we might have some people from the public that were expecting public comment. If you want to raise an issue, we're happy to hear from you. I can't see you. You're behind the screen, so... Does anyone hear from the public that wanted to be heard on Kingdom Hall? Okay, so that matter is going to be rescheduled to November 14th. I understand all the notices have been sent out. So if there's someone here from the public that wishes to speak, perhaps on the November 14th, I urge them to do so. We will have the public hearing that night. All right, so, going to our regular meeting, the first up is Walmart, the grocery, the online grocery pickup.
If the Board doesn't object, maybe what I'll do is provide Kingdom Hall applicant with a copy of the comments.
Yeah, and I have an extra one here.
In that area.
Okay, good.
That way they could possibly consider if they want to make some adjustments in the plans.
Right.
Some time for supplemental for the public hearing, and we'd less to deal with.
Yeah.
I will take a one-minute break while I open up the floor, please.
Yep, and while you're doing that, George, I can ask you, why am I not on? Oh, forget it. That's okay. We've moved on. Let's see. All right. Okay, you ready to roll?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we have Mark's comment letter. Mark, do you want to start with your comment letter? The Board hasn't had an opportunity to read it, but, you know, you can just go through it with us and go from there.
Actually, a very short comment letter, as noted in the prior discussion. The applicant has addressed all our prior comments, and they've included the information that we had requested in the narrative. So Comment 1 is just a repeat of the scope of the project, identifying that 11 existing parking spaces are being restrikt as eight wider spaces for the online grocery pickup service. They did clarify at the past meeting that the intent long-term would be to possibly change it from just groceries to other pickup, and I think the Board is going to discuss that further tonight with the applicant, just to clarify that. But as far as the plans go, they've addressed all my concerns relative to signs. I am noting in Comment 2 that it is still subject to the code enforcement officer issuing a permit on the sign, and he'll make a determination if they're in compliance with both their location, dimension, square footage, and so on. And it was also, I'm just acknowledging that it was sent to our plan, and that's complete. They returned a local determination.
Okay.
From a procedural standpoint, I think the Board is in good shape, and I know that Mike has worked on approval resolution. I give the floor to Mike.
What do you prefer, Mike?
Resolution is pretty straightforward. The only change from the one you had last week was I removed the first condition, which referred to Mark's letter by date, because his letter now says all conditions are satisfied, and in its place is a condition that says he has to review the plans set before the Chair signs it to make sure it's satisfactory. The condition regarding signs and building inspector approval is the second condition. Third is a narrative that needs to be attached. I did get a copy from the arena, that narrative with the date stamped. I will attach it as part of the resolution when I send it to the town clerk for filing. And the fourth condition is the standard condition that says nothing may be built is not shown on the approved plans.
Where is it? I'm sorry?
Condition 4.
Yeah, okay.
Simply says they can't build anything that hasn't been shown on the plans.
Right. Okay. I didn't have anything further on this. Do you have any questions for us, Rob? And you know what? Why don't you just put your appearance on the record so we have it?
Yeah, sure thing. Rob Osterheld with Holder Engineering, representing Walmart with this application. I don't have anything further. If there are any questions, I can certainly answer them, but other than that, we did receive Mark's letter, so, you know, no issues there, and, you know, we're happy to answer any questions from you.
I don't have anything. Does anyone have any questions or issues? Mark, Mike, anything? Is number missing?
Yeah, I just think it's worth getting into the record that the resolution does limit
Yes.
the pickup being for groceries.
Which is what we all agreed to last week.
Right, but I just wanted to have the, in the record this time, it's in the resolution, I want Rob to be aware of it.
Okay.
The Board did appreciate the applicant's representatives confirming their long-term intent, but this approval is restricted to the grocery aspect. So I don't want any confusion on the fact that you might explain something different. That doesn't mean the Board extended the approval to include what may happen in the future after your turn and report back.
And your narrative seems to be specifically focused on the online grocery.
Yes. And just to clarify that, that's a good point, Mark. I'm glad you brought it up. But even to clarify further, there is other pickup at the facility already. The only thing is this application at this end of the store is going to be for online grocery pickup.
Yep, yes, and we understand that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page. Good, all right. Does anyone have any changes or issues with the resolution?
I don't think I've ever achieved that before.
Yeah. I'm sure you have.
Let me look for a typo.
Oh, you'll find those, Mary.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion to grant the resolution of approval for site plan?
I'll make the motion.
Anyone want to second it?
I'll second.
Okay, Gary. Let's go to Rich.
Aye.
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 All right.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
That was easy.
Yeah, that was easy.
You're welcome.
We appreciate our work and effort getting through the project. And next steps, I guess, would be to submit plans for signatures, correct?
Correct.
I can coordinate with you, Noreen, on how many sets and things like that.
Are there any changes to the sets that we have?
I don't believe you have any changes to make, so...
Yeah, we actually, I think we put them all back together, so we had those, that 12. Was it a set of 12? Yeah, so we're good. And was, do we have milers?
No.
So we need two milers.
Two sets of milers?
That's generally what we get.
We should start somewhere along the line getting, you know, some plans or stamp, having them scanned.
Yes.
We have PDF copies of all the drawings, electronic copies.
Yeah, now, I think we talked about that, and I said we should just have your office do it, since you have that ability.
We can't, so we just have to figure out a way...
What you should do is bill for it, so that way we can get that process, because I can't sign the plans until everything's been paid for. So if you bill for it in your current bill, we can get that paid, and then I can sign the plans.
I'll work that way. I think it's a good idea that we get sort of electronic records.
Yes, we need that.
And I, if we can do it, I, some of these values do it, and I don't like when you have a scanned copy without the stamp.
No, no.
When you open it up, you want to see that
Yes.
stamped.
I want to know that it is the signed version. And I need it to really be, I think, through your office, because if we have it from the applicant, then there's always the question of, was it the right one? You know, rather...
We'll work that out with that takeoff process.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so right now, basically, what Noreen does is she puts together an approval package for me. So it will be the resolution, the filed resolution, the resolution will go to Mary Ellen, our town clerk. She will stamp the file and file it in her records.
Okay.
Part of the approval package is that resolution confirmation from Mark and Mike, that there's nothing further that's needed, confirmation from finance that all the bills pertaining to the project have been paid. And I don't think there's any really other outstanding issues for your resolutions, so that's pretty clean.
Yeah.
At that point, I have that package, and then I know that I can go ahead and sign the plans. And then you're notified, and you can pick up your plans.
So we don't need to add any boxes, approval boxes, or anything like that to the plans?
Nope.
You just have a stamp.
Correct.
But we do need to get you two sets of milers.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. We will get those out to you, and you'll have them shortly.
Great. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for your time and effort. Yeah, you're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the, no, did we, did he leave? We had someone here, I thought we had someone from the public that came in. Did they leave?
Yes.
Okay. That's too bad. All right. Okay, moving on to the administrative section. I'm going to move the minutes, so that way we can get Mark and Mike out at a nice time. Let's discuss the wetland markers. Do we have the revised version? Right, it was just the carcinite issue, right?
The carcinite, because it's carbonized, it's consistent, it's correct, it references the manufacturer of carcinite. This does not reflect the actual sticker, because that's something down there finalized in the manufacturer.
Okay.
Obviously, we had a draft, but Mary was kind of prepared, so we'll follow up on systems that I've done.
Okay. And there was some emailing back and forth with Bonnie from the last meeting. We wanted, you wanted me to advise the Town Board that we were requesting that Chapter 56, the wetland section, be revised to give us the authority to adopt a policy and to have procedures for installation, which was since we want to be able to collect the fees for the stickers. I sent an email, which was probably less than detailed, so it caused a little bit of some confusion, and Bonnie didn't know what was going on. So, but I think we've cleared it up, and...
By the end of the day, we did, and Brian has recommended that we actually draft the language for the wetland code provision
Right.
that includes that authority, and if you'd like me to, I'll do it.
Yep, yep, I think so. Everyone's good for that?
Do we have to make a motion to?
I don't think we do.
No.
We don't need a motion to.
Whatever level of formality you want. If you're all nodding, that's good enough.
We're all nodding. Yeah. I think that's fine. We'll have to prioritize. You have a lot of things on your plate, so let's prioritize them.
I cleared some off today, but...
What's that?
I know they want to consider that in the, so I put it down to do on Friday.
Yeah, I think that anything that has to do with code changes, we need to get that done, because they're waiting on us at this point, so that's probably the priority. And I think, I don't know if you saw, I just emailed Bonnie back. She was asking some questions as to what we were asking.
Yep, I think it's clarified, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so, it's not on here, but Mike had prepared a response to Ed Sims. I don't know, do we have it? I think you just handed it out.
I did hand it out, yeah.
I think we all need to take five minutes to read through that.
You may want to read the other letter at the same time, that had to do with the code changes and steep slopes.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone has, that it's not in our package.
I handed it out as well.
Oh, you did? Good. Excellent. Yeah, it was in last week's package.
And I'm sorry, I just couldn't get to it before today.
Did you hear that? Wait, hold on.
Yeah, October 10th.
It's one of each, but I have another copy if you need it.
I have it in mine, because I have last week's.
Yeah, I just put a paper for my... But he handed out new copies today, dated the test.
Right. No.
One of each, it's one to Sims, and it's one to the Town Board.
No, I don't mean that. I mean Sims' letter.
You need it?
I actually, I actually have, I put it, I stopped to put it on the disk, so we had it.
Recognize that I wrote it, not having
I know.
the original letter from the Conservation Commission, to which it responded. So I was assuming that the things that the subsequent Conservation Commission's letter to us were contained in the first letter.
And we don't have that.
But that's only a hundred.
Okay, so let's take a break. We can go off the record for five minutes, so you guys can have time to read that. Thank you. All right, we're back on the record. Everyone's read. We have here, what we're talking about right now is, there was a September 5th, 2017, letter written to us by the Conservation Commission Chair, John Ebert, and it attaches a letter from the Department of, Orange County Department of Health, from Ed Sims, Edwin Sims, dated July 25th. And in that letter, Mr. Sims' letter, it references a letter he received from Ward Brower of the Conservation Commission. Apparently, Ward must have sent him a letter dated July 18th. We discussed this at the October 3rd Planning Board meeting, these letters. Unfortunately, we did not have the benefit of Ward's original July 18th letter, which started this ball rolling. And we asked that he make sure that was sent to us, so that we had an understanding of what information he was sharing with Mr. Sims. We still do not have that letter. So, you know, Ward had asked that we respond in writing to the Conservation Commission's letter and Mr. Sims' letter, and Mike took a stab at doing that. And there was some discussion of whether it should be a response to the Conservation Commission or a response to Mr. Sims. I think generally, we thought that the response should go to Mr. Sims. I'm still on the fence on that one. But my difficulty, so Mike has prepared a letter dated October 10th, this draft, and that's what I asked the Planning Board members to review, since we just got it. My overall, I did read this before I came. I just read it through quickly. My concern, and I think it's a serious concern, is that we still don't have Ward's letter. And this is, I think we, from the tenor of the last meeting, we asked for a strongly written letter, but I never like to do that unless I absolutely know, have all the facts. And we don't have Ward's letter. And that's a significant hole, because we're really guessing as to what, I mean, we have a sense of what Ward shared with him, but we don't really quite know. And the issue that I was particularly concerned about, and that I think some people on the Board, on this Board, shared, was the statement by Mr. Ebert in his letter to us, saying that the Planning Board has not acted to require owners and developers of these subdivisions to prepare the SEIS. You know, his conclusion that we have not acted to obtain SEIS when we should have acted, and when Ward has raised issues with us previously before, we still have not acted. And that's something that I think we all felt uncomfortable leaving out there without responding to. When I look at Mr. Sims' letter, it bothers me, because I think it doesn't portray a complete picture of what we, as a Board, would need to look at to be able to require an SEIS. Although I acknowledge, in his letter, he does go through the supplemental EIS process, and he says there must be genuinely, I think he says, "The information must be genuinely new." I wonder if he isn't trying to say to Ward, you know, "There has to be new information for us to act," but I just don't know, because we don't have Ward's letter.
I agree.
And so, in that way, it's not a reflection on Mike's letter whatsoever, but we just, we don't have the letter. So, you know, so I'm uncomfortable sending something like this until we have all the facts. That's how I feel. But you guys can certainly weigh in. I'd love to hear what you think.
I agree with your comment, because I don't know the context to what Ed Sims was replying to. So he may have been totally, not totally, but somewhat justified in his mind, based on how the letter was written to him, and I think we should have that before that goes out. Just one other comment that I think may bolster the argument that I was trying to make at the last meeting. If we do send this letter out, maybe we could put in the ratio, 4.5 occupants is based on a three-bedroom house, so that would be 1.5 average, 1.5 persons per bedroom. And, you know, we're trying to make a case that that may not be adequate, because the density and the number of people living in a house may be two, three, four in some areas of the town. So I think that would clarify, and there are a couple of minor typos, but they could remain until we discuss this further and before it goes out.
I suspect that no matter what Ward's letter says, I'm probably not going to want to be as strong as I was at the meeting last week in saying it's offensive in this lady, even though I suspect I still probably feel that way. You know, I'm sure you got that directly from me, and...
I tried to carry it forward.
We probably don't need to go that far. There's probably a way of saying that perhaps he did not intend to...
I just want those letters you put in your drawer to the next day, but he didn't have a next day to do.
Yes, yes, it probably is. You know what, though? And in plenty, I want everyone to comment on this, but one of the other things that I don't think this letter does, because it's to Mr. Sims, I think we do have to address something to the Conservation Commission, because they specifically said, "We have not acted as a Board," and that we haven't done so in the many times Ward has brought this issue up to us. And that's, I think, beyond Mr. Sims' letter being somewhat...
You'll know better how to respond when you see the letter that they wrote
We will.
to the Health Department that prompted this response.
Yes, yes, yeah. And again, we're all somewhat shooting blind here, because we just don't have the whole picture, but I don't want to leave it out there that, you know, I think we all agree that Ward has brought up the issue of, you know, potential increased capacity due to large-sized families and that, but, you know, I think we have addressed it.
Well, given that the original letter from the Conservation Commission was July, I don't think the delay from now until November
No, I don't either.
is a huge problem.
Yeah, so Gary, what do you think?
I think it covered all the bases. I think Mike did a good job. I was not aware of the actual size of the home when it comes to 4.5 occupants per home.
I didn't either.
I didn't break that down, but thank you for the information.
Anthony, you said four bedrooms, is that...
Well, I can go to three bedrooms.
Mark, is that right?
I'd have to check, go back and...
I'm not surprised about that, but I do want to make a comparison to the design of number of occupants to the number of...
We'll check that out between now and when the final letter is out, just to make sure it's accurate.
Yeah.
But overall, I think it discussed basically everything we discussed last week. It goes through the process that we usually carry on to determine the needs of development, and it also has a way to remedy the problem, which sometimes letters don't do, instead of just screaming and hollering and stopping your feet, at least this one does, this letter does have a way to have the problem corrected, if there is one. So I think it covered all the bases for me.
Okay, Mary?
I agree, holding off another month would give us plenty of time, and we might have to revise, or not revise, based if we get the original letter. So as Gary said, I'm in agreement with all the other points. Mike Donnelly's letter has addressed, and that's my comment.
Okay. Lisa?
I don't have any other comments.
Okay.
I think we should get the letter as well, the Conservation Commission.
I think this is a well-written letter, but we do need to see the original.
Okay, yeah, and so I did send an email to John Ebert, so we'll see if we can get a response. I take it we have not gotten anything from Ward and Noreen?
No, I have not.
Okay. All right. So hopefully, we will get it soon, so that way Mike can, and when we do, I'll circulate it to everyone, and then we can have Mike revise or not. Okay, so that takes care of that. Thank you, Mike, for putting that together.
Sure. Yes, thank you.
This is good.
And I think you all should think about whether we have to respond to the Conservation Commission, because in a way, that might be the more important letter.
See what the
Let's see.
mystery letter says.
Yes, the mystery letter.
Worst comes to worst, we can carbon copy them after we send something to the county, if we do.
Yep. Okay, so the next thing we have, Mike, if you recall from the last meeting, Bonnie had some follow-up questions on our memos regarding our comments to the proposed zoning code changes, and one of the outstanding issues was the steep slopes issue, and so...
Which led to a long and bold discussion about a whole lot of things, and I tried to track it in this letter.
Right, so let's take some time. We just got this. Again, let's go off the record. We can, that's the October 10th letter from Mike to the Town, okay, thank you. All right, we're back on the record. We are reviewing an October 10th, 2017, draft letter prepared by Mike Donnelly to the Town Board regarding proposed zoning chapter amendments. Over the past months, this Board has been reviewing the proposed zoning code changes, and we have submitted several memos, or actually, I think, two or three memos with a lot of backup documentation on our proposed, our comments to the proposed code changes. This is simply part of that process, and there's some issues that we've gone back and forth with Bonnie on, and she wanted some clarification and some further information from us. So, Mike, I'll let you sort of go through how you want to go through this.
We had added in an earlier recommendation letter, the language at the top of Page 2 in E, that didn't, upon further reflection, and Bonnie's good catch, make sense. It suggested a free pass for projects that didn't comply with bulk, and that was not at all what we intended. And the correction is the E below that, which has that parenthetical reference that says that any non-compliance would both still require a site plan, but it may require variance relief as well. That was the first issue, and I think that went simple, and I just carried it forth. I had sent it in an earlier email to Bonnie, but I just thought I'd make it part of this letter anyway, because you discussed it.
Okay, before you go on with that, there's just the one typo in that, you see there a second E?
Yeah.
The paragraph before it? Upon further reflection? And in order, in?
Where are we here?
Paragraph right before your last E, where it starts Bonnie Fransen?
Yeah.
You say, "Upon further reflection?"
No, okay.
Got it?
Thank you.
Yep.
Got it. The second issue was the discussion that Bonnie had sent along to your Board, and that talks about steep slopes and how to handle them. As you know, what is proposed and what exists, to some extent already, is an approach called net lot area, and that is, when a subdivision is proposed, the number of lots, or the amount of developer land, is computed not by the gross acreage, but by the net buildable area. And you subtract from the gross acreage certain things, including steep slopes. The question that Bonnie had asked for your take on was, what is the appropriate percentage of slope that should be excluded? 20 is what is in the current proposed law, a 20% slope. And her suggestion was that may be overly restrictive, and perhaps something in the 25 to 30% range might be worth considering, and she asked for your take on that. I kind of passed that to the Town Board, because we didn't really come up with a number. I think the way to really get a handle on that is for somebody to show you a couple of examples of what that might mean, but if you want to put in a number, like 27 and a half, we can do that. But when you discussed that last week, it went to a larger discussion, and that is, how do we handle, number one, what can and cannot be done with steep slope areas? And your first recommendation is that no construction be allowed in those areas, or that it be restricted in some fashion, like where necessary, in order to gain access, because that was not explicitly in the law, as I understand it. And secondly, the issue of what do we do with lots that already exist, that are not subject to subdivision approval, that apply for a building permit? And since the purpose of the whole regulatory scheme is to protect the environment, both in terms of erosion and the aesthetic appearance of houses that can be seen for miles around, I added a suggestion, a suggested component, that says for these older subdivisions, when a building permit application is made, the plot plan of the building permit application has to show the extent of slopes that exist. And if anything is proposed on a slope of greater than whatever the percentage number that gets plugged in, that would require site plan approval, as would any change in an approved subdivision map. This goes back to the issue that we discussed and we did not recommend, which was to add site plan approval as an overlay to subdivision. But this is much more narrow. It says that if a lot has been approved, and for a long time in terms of drainage, you have been pegging the size of the lot to the analysis that was done to handle stormwater runoff. We're now saying that you're going to look at slope location as well, and that any change to that location shown on that map, when building permit is applied for, that will also trigger a need for site plan approval, for that lot owner, that developer to come. And I don't know what you can call it, other than site plan approval. Now, the last piece tied into the discussion of the water issue, and I'm suggesting to the board that they may also want to say that bedroom count is also one of the provisions that's fixed by subdivision approval, and that any change in bedroom account, bedroom count would require, what amounts to amended, but site plan approval from the planning board. It's particularly important, given the discussion we had earlier about lots where, as is often the case in Monroe, the hydrogeologic balance is tenuous, and to suddenly allow more bedrooms than were included in the study would throw things out of whack. Now, what that will likely lead to is what has happened with your condition requiring no changes to the size, the footprint of the lot, which was tied to drainage protection, that applicants, or developers, more properly, will show the full number of bedrooms they really do propose as part of the subdivision review process. And that is not bad.
That's very...
Because then you can analyze it on that basis, as you have with drainage. And that is good for the developer, because he knows truly what he's getting, and it's good for protection of the drainage issue, which we've already covered, and now the potential water resource issue, if we limit the bedroom count to what has been applied for. No one is restricting the number of bedrooms in the house, just that the subdivision proposal must show the number of bedrooms that will then become the limit as a condition of approval. Now, the other issue, talking about whether or not the water usage by bedroom count that the county health department and the state use, and we use, in our figures, is an issue for a future day, but this would limit that bedroom count. So now, the list of site plan triggers goes from A to E to G, and adds the two additional triggers, that changes in the footprint, bedroom count, any of the things that we have been using on an approved subdivision would require site plan approval, and G has to do with lots on ancient subdivisions where a building permit is now being applied for and shows construction or disturbance of steep slope areas. Those would also require site plan approval.
Okay.
So that went further, I think, than our discussion, but I think it's a logical extension of our discussion, and where I thought you might want to go. If it is, we can send this letter, whatever changes you might want to make, whether it's too much this late in the game for the town board to be able to, you know, because they've been at this for a long time. And whether this throws things too out of whack, that's their legislative judgment. But I think this is perhaps the answer to some of the issues we've been talking about for a long time, and I think is a logical approach. There's always the issue of how easily it may be enforced for recently approved subdivisions, but that's an issue of application and enforcement for the future. I think as a model, I think it works and addresses some of the issues you've been struggling with for some time, including those that were raised by the Conservation Commission in their July letter that we hadn't seen.
How would that affect a builder who just says, "I'm going to build six bedrooms just to be safe," and he has that ability to do it at the site plan approval, and then, you know, he just wants to scale up to... I mean, if I were a builder and I want to maximize the size of a house, I would say I want to build six.
But if it is in an area where, let's assume it's a large enough subdivision, that there's something real here, and we're concerned that if, particularly if he's also proposing central sewer, Orange County sewer disposal, and individual wells, that we may want to do the water balance analysis based upon that number of bedrooms. And if that's the number of bedrooms that the groundwater can support, then he's entitled to that number of bedrooms. But it may show, and that's the worry of the Conservation Commission, that the groundwater cannot support that number of lots. At least we know it before we approved a structure that later, if we didn't know what he really, you know, was considering, would suddenly end up being six bedrooms instead of three or four. Is it, are you worried that it encourages a developer to maximize his bedroom count? There's certainly that impact, as there is with the footprint size. And what we have seen is most of the subdivisions, since you started to include that condition, that have been approved in recent years, show house locations, not like the little monopoly houses you see on the board game, but instead, house locations that are essentially equal to the building envelope, the four setbacks of the lot. But unless we want to get into, and you recommended as well, a pyramid-type approach to limit size of structures according to lot size or a floor area ratio, you know, the code doesn't restrict how much of the land within the building envelope you can use, except for drainage analysis and lot coverage issues. We do not have a mechanism, although you recommended one, to right-size houses to lot size. But if you had all those components working at once, I'd like to think it would go a long way toward right-sizing houses, making sure they don't have drainage impacts, that you didn't have an opportunity to analyze, and that they wouldn't present, in the case of wells with sewer disposal, the kind of groundwater imbalance that we feared and analyzed carefully in earlier environmental impact statements.
Okay, so, yeah, I hear, I think I hear your concern, Anthony, that it might encourage them to, you know, where they otherwise wouldn't, submit application or plans that show a six-bedroom house instead of a four-bedroom house. Although, in a way, I see that as a good thing, because that means that the hydrogeologic study will be based on the six bedrooms, and we will have a water analysis that addresses that number of presumed people under the state law, you know, state guidelines. What it doesn't address is the developer who does what potentially they are doing now, which is said, "No, it's still four bedrooms," with every intent of putting, you know, 10 people in the house. I don't know that the bedroom count will encourage that kind of developer to submit plans for a six-bedroom. To me, it seems like this bedroom count requirement is a good thing. I don't know that it's a cure-all, but I think it could be helpful. But I hear you. Is it encouraging larger development than would otherwise be considered? I don't know if it does, though. I doubt it. I...
I think if their intent was to build six, you would likely get six, even if you were told three or four here.
Right.
So at least it'll be a more honest and more complete application, because you'll understand what the potential build value is.
In fact, they'll be faced with, you know, if we put this in the law, that developer is faced with the fact that if he doesn't come in and say, "Yeah, he wants six bedrooms," then he's not going to get a building permit if his plans don't show it. You know, so, but again, it doesn't address that hole that we have of, they put in four bedrooms, and, but we have these large families.
Well, and the other issue, even, not looking at the hydraulic imbalance with wells and municipal sewer, just for the onsite disposal, I believe our code enforcement officer many times receives plans, "Oh, we're going to build five bedrooms instead of three." There's no restriction, so he's effectively stuck having amended plans submitted to him, saying, "Well, we're going to change the sanitary system." This locks it in, that if you aren't accurate in your supplemental to the planning board, you can't have the code enforcement officer fix that. They've got to come back here, which I think is going to be a little easier for a bank.
Another thing, too, that I think we brainstormed a little bit was, on the accessory apartment law, you know, if you have this requirement that the plans have to show bedroom count and the approvals, that's part of the approval. 10 years from now, when that house has been for 10 years and they come back in for an accessory apartment, if that accessory apartment adds a bedroom that goes beyond that approval, then that's something that gets looked at at that point. It gives us the added ability to say, "Hey, maybe we need to revisit the water analysis." Kind of like that. You're a concern.
I just feel like, you know, cause the developer to strategize, let's go for six, because if we go for four, we're left, we're only can build four, so we might as well design for six and scale back.
But then at least we know that the water analysis is for the additional capacity, which is a good thing. You know, and that way, I like it.
You're looking at a more worst-case scenario, is what you're doing.
Yeah.
I do like the fact that, you know, at least it does tie them into something that is an approved site plan. But, you know, if the guy said six, just for the sake of six, and that's what he could do, or they could do, and it turns out to be four, you know, that's fine, because we have a conservative site plan.
Right, then we have a really conservative site plan then, so... What do you think, Gary?
I think it's better to see the worst-case scenario upfront when you go through the planning process, as opposed to look at something that's scaled back, plan the development, and then find out that it's ballooned out larger than what was originally discussed. I mean, the things that we look at for a subdivision are taking a lot of things into consideration, and all of a sudden, you come in, you're thinking you have a four-bedroom home, and all of a sudden, it's six bedrooms, because they've built out every inch of that building envelope.
Right.
At least you covered the drainage, and with a four-bedroom home, you figure you did the right water analysis. But now, all of a sudden, you have six bedrooms, a few more people, they're going to use more water, create more waste. If you look at the worst-case scenario and plan for it, and they downsize it, I'm happy for it.
Then you're okay. My understanding is currently, for instance, on the projects that are listed in Ward's letter, we weren't around back then, but those plans do not limit, they're limited to the envelope, but they don't limit the number of bedrooms.
Those that had septic do, because the septic approval self-limits.
Yes, I mean, the sewer...
But I didn't go through the couple hundred lots in that corridor to count which are which. They're all recited in the hydrology analysis of the finding statement, so it's all there. The ones that did not have the restriction, because it wasn't part of the septic approval, would be those on well and sewer.
Sorry.
And that's really the area that the study concentrated on, and took at face value what the proposal was, as was pointed out in the Conservation Commission's letter to you, that the developer made an affirmative representation of whatever it was, four bedrooms, I forget what the number was, in those subdivisions. We didn't think back then of what this potential issue was. As acutely aware as we were of the hydrology issue, we didn't think in these terms. None of us did, so, and none of you were there, so you can't take the blame, but I certainly didn't think in those terms, and I was here. Nor did our hydrogeologist or our planner. It just wasn't part of what our equation was at that point in time.
And we're talking, what, the 90s?
80s or 90s, it must have been the 90s. It's a...
It's a time ago.
A long time.
I forget when the GEIS was done.
Yeah.
It was during the 90s.
Yeah.
Mary?
Actually...
Okay, playing devil's advocate, I'm a developer, and I want to build three bedrooms, but my bedrooms are all going to be 25 by 25.
Sure, for 12 people, sure.
Right.
And that's what I'm saying, it doesn't cover that everything.
So it doesn't, right, so I do like the...
This is not an occupancy limitation.
Right, but you're not limiting the size of the rooms either, so even though an average bi-level home, maybe the rooms are 12 by 12 or something like that, there's nothing limiting in the future for somebody to say, "Well, I'm still building three bedrooms, but they're going to be 25 by 25."
Well, remember, you are fixing the footprint.
And again, that would be maxed out to the envelope, as Gary had said, so that's the only...
Certainly, you're correct, although my hope would be that if all of these components were enacted into the code, you have the drainage one that controls the footprint, if you had a pyramid or FAR that controls the sizing, both in terms of setback, in terms of height, and in terms of coverage based upon lot size...
Floor area ratio.
Yeah, floor area or pyramid, so you right-size the house to the lot. I don't know that the opportunities, except on extremely large lots, there's going to be to create, in a three-bedroom house, bedrooms of that type size. Without that, you know, you're right, but I think the idea that constructing fully to the building envelope is what's going to happen all the time would disappear if you had a floor area ratio or pyramid component to the code. So if you have all those things working at once, the footprint that's based upon the actual drainage impacts of the impervious surface, some kind of right-sizing component that makes sure the structure isn't too large for the lot, and a limitation on the bedrooms that are approved, no more than the number of bedrooms approved may be constructed, if all those things work, I don't know what else you could do, you know, to make it work. And it's easy to say, "Let's have an occupancy limitation," and there is case law to suggest that if you have a legitimate governmental purpose for restricting occupancy, like we do in a room like this for fire safety and other purposes, that you could do that. However, that's a bigger enforcement nightmare than any of this, because how do you, what do you, wake people up at 3:00 in the morning and do a bed count? It's just not going to work.
Right.
So I don't know that it's a complete solution. I don't know that it's the best solution, and I'm certainly willing to hear others, but it seems to me consistent with the kind of discussion you've had, the issues that have been raised, the objectives you hope to achieve, which is to right-size houses to lots, and make sure that the drainage impacts and water resource impacts are not ones that are not kept in check. It is an approach. Does it encourage developers to, at the beginning of the process, maximize what they might hope in their wildest dreams? Yes, but remember, they got to build that drainage infrastructure to meet that size lot, and though they wouldn't have to build the number of bedrooms they have approved, you know, it's not always, you can't always assume that their incentive is to maximize every bit of it, but we've certainly seen a lot of the encouragement to maximize footprint based upon the policy we've had. But at least we haven't had the impacts on drainage that we feared.
Okay, that's my... Lisa?
I don't really have any comments, I've just been following the discussion.
Okay. Rich?
I'm good.
Okay. Mike, and I think we should probably vote on this issue, to make sure that we're sort of all on board here. The one thing that I know, I would still like to mention in this, is the recommendation that they consider a U.S. law. It's not mentioned, and I know, you know, it's opening a whole other can of worms, given the breadth of the project that they're already facing, but it is something, you know, you've got in here, in the net area, on page two, you've got, "Restricted provisions should be cross-referenced within the tree code and subdivision regulations in the zoning chapter." Maybe you can make mention of it.
Repeat the recommendation made earlier of a U.S. protection law?
Which really is, would affect the steep slope analysis, the way we're proposing it here, so, another way to just remind them that I think it's still very important. And then, somewhere...
While you're thinking, there is a need on page three, under the heading Regulation of Bedroom Count, I had said I'm attaching the various letters from the Conservation Commission, Sims, and our response. I'll leave those out and just say the issue was raised in recent letters, but we don't have, they're not completed, and they shouldn't wait. This needs to move forward.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Should we be picking out a more exact number for our steep slope maximum, as opposed to a range?
If you think we can come up with one, I mean, Mike's left it up to the town board here, that just the general, our general agreement, that yes, it could be raised. Maybe you want to say no higher than a certain amount or something.
Well, we had 25 or 25 to 30, so it's want to go max 30 and be done, use that number.
I thought 27.5 is just too obvious to split into babies.
I can see how they're going to calculate the percent slope, 27.5.
Lawyers like numbers divisible by three, so...
Okay, so you're right, okay. Use your knowledge.
Not so, not so. So do you want to try to go with, like, not to exceed 30? Everyone comfortable with that? Or leave it up to them, but not...
30 is pretty steep.
Yeah, that's...
That's like max.
That's pretty steep. What do you think, Mike? Mark, sorry?
I'm just looking at Mike's first paragraph underneath net lot area, steep slopes, page two. two. And it says, the last sentence, "A percentage in the 25 to 30% range appears appropriate." I think that is the range they should be considering. You might even say that they're changing to the board recommends, a percentage in the 25 to 30. That way, let them choose where they want in that window. I think you get over 30, it's getting really, really steep.
That's really steep.
And I think 25, you wouldn't want to go lower than 25, because I think it's too restrictive at that point. So I think that's a nice place to just maybe have the board recommend that 25 to 30 range.
I can change that sentence to read that way.
Sure. Anyone? Or do you want, or do you want...
Well, the sentence does read, "A percentage in the 25 to 30% range appears to be appropriate."
But I can say that the planning board recommends...
It's good to have a range.
You have to give it a 25 to 30.
You direct that the board's recommending something in that range, if that's what the board thinks.
Yeah. In your bedroom count section, right on page four, your second paragraph from the top, the planning board suggests the addition of an approved bedroom count limitation on lots and subdivisions based upon bedroom count, on the, on the approved plans. And I know you say it before, but you might want to throw in there for subdivisions with sewer. Would we be considering that also for septic? Because it's not...
Well, it might give you an additional enforcement mechanism, because the only enforcement mechanism that would exist for the septic system would be the Orange County Health Department approval. This would give us an additional...
I would like to have the additional personally.
Yeah, I would have it applied to all, because if it's an application that did not receive Orange County Health Department approval, then again, it's thrown on Ben's lap to look at an alternate sanitary design. This way, it would be across the board, and if they want to change anything, they got to come back.
Everyone okay with that? I hear, I hear a sigh. You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any comments on the letter? And we should really probably take a vote on the issue of the bedroom count, because, you know, we did have some, you know, disagreement. So, how about, so, all in favor of the bedroom count restriction being added? Anthony, I'll start with you.
I'm good with that.
Okay. And Gary?
Yeah, we need the bedroom count.
I agree.
Okay, Lisa?
I'm undecided on this.
Okay.
Oh, I think so, yes.
Okay. All right. I do as well. Okay. So, and I'm, I'm good with the letter. I mean, I'd like you to add something about the view sheds, but other than that, and...
I'll add that.
I don't have any other changes. Anyone else have any other changes or suggestions? Anything you want to address? Okay, I would say this is a priority, because I know Bonnie needs it.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay.
Mike?
Yeah.
Is there, can we have an occupancy restriction? Is it only because the enforcement is tough? Is there another reason why we can't?
Provided you have a legitimate governmental reason for doing so, you can limit occupancy. Even the US Supreme Court in passing reference said that. It is highly unusual in residential homes, because they don't have the public safety, health, and welfare justification to limit occupancy in places of public assembly, meeting rooms, restaurants, theaters, and the like.
Sort of same issue.
And there you have a whole host of things. Doors have to open outward, and a number of things. Those things typically don't, are not as pressing in a single-family home. The risk of fire and, and exiting doesn't change a whole lot, I don't think, from having five people in the family to having 12. If the regulatory scheme tied drinking water consumption by occupancy and not by bedroom count, and therefore the municipality, remember, that's a statewide and countywide methodology. That's how the regulatory scheme works. And if it did it by occupancy, then I would think that that would be a legitimate governmental interest in limiting occupancy to preserve water resources.
If, when you say, if it did it, meaning the regulatory scheme set by the state, followed by the county.
Right.
If they, if they, if they took the lead and changed the standards, perhaps even just for our region, or regions that are affected by large populations, I mean, large family populations, that would be something that we could piggyback on to and change our code to address.
I believe we could, yeah.
But without that...
But the problem, and I think the reason why they don't, is it's very difficult, when you approve a lot in a subdivision, to know over the 50 or 75 years that the house exists, who was going to live there at any point in time, and how many people will be members of that family. So they use a bedroom count methodology that's, that's goose-ed up to, to have a water consumption used per bedroom that's much higher than, than the average. Or, or, yeah, I think, I think it's fair to say than the average. So that it covers group homes, large families, you know, large homes. And the, the suggestion in the letter to, to Mr. Sims was that, well, wait, if suddenly that augmented number that's tied to bedroom count, you find, doesn't work in southeastern Orange County, and you should have the data to demonstrate that, because you have sections that have central water, and you compare the metered water usage per dwelling unit with the bedroom count, or the, or, or the assumed bedroom count based upon an inspection, or building inspectors' records from, from the various municipalities. And if you find that that ratio, that method doesn't work, they have the independent authority to promulgate regulations that differ from the states. And I think arguably, they could do it for a region of the county, and place a much higher water consumption number per bedroom on houses in southeastern Orange County. I, I, I believe that would be a permissible exercise of the county's authority. But to try to do it by occupancy, I think would be very difficult.
And then we covered this last week, but for Rich's benefit, he wasn't here, I did ask the question, do you know of any other municipalities who have done this for residential?
I, I do not.
I haven't heard any, no.
Now, I think the city of New York, in multifamily housing, in existing buildings of certain sizes, may have occupancy limits. But some of those may well relate to fire safety and other issues. You're, I'm talking about, you know, walk-ups with multiple floors, and the ability, in a fire event, to get everybody out. Suddenly, the number of occupants per, per dwelling unit might, might be an important public safety issue. With single-family homes, it's, it would be highly unusual, and I know of no municipalities that have done it. Although, I must admit that the authority exists if you have a legitimate governmental purpose that supports the limitation.
Right.
Recently, we had an application in another municipality that dealt with public comment relative to occupancy and number. And the same decision was reached by that council, that really, the municipality has no right to, to limit the occupancy numbers. And the, the owner of the project, it was going to be a rental complex, said, well, you might not have that authority, but we do in our lease agreements. So they wanted to control it, not only to react to the public comment, but to the use of their property. So they actually, in their lease, limit the occupancy. And that's a, a private agreement.
But that's not something that their planning board...
But it wouldn't be for an owner.
No, I'm not saying that it applies to the issue that we're dealing with here.
No, no, but, but it take, but the, the next logical thought in my head is, is that something that a planning board could require of an owner who will be using it for, for investment purposes like that? But I don't know, we don't have...
Well, certainly, if, if you had a multifamily unit, where the homeowners association bylaws, or the, the leases, the applicant told you, we're going to have that restriction, I'd recommend that you hop on that offer, and hereby make that offer a condition of your approval. They'd be hard-pressed to argue. They just said they were going to do it, so now it's a condition.
Yeah.
But to do it on your own, without a legitimate justification, big difference between when government does something, and when a private citizen does something.
Right, sure, and a property owner.
It sounds like there's no real precedence for this.
Not that I'm aware of, Rich. I, I've not seen, but I, you know, E-code is a place you can spend time, and look through all the municipalities in the country, and see if you can find one where they have occupancy limits in single-family homes. But I don't think you want to cut me loose to do that, that analysis.
Too bad.
Well, you could do it. Just go on E-code and do every single municipality.
We can set a precedent, right?
Okay, so subject to those changes, maybe we have a motion that Mike can get out this letter. I guess I'll, I'll make that motion. You want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Rich?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Moving on. One, one thing before you guys go, I don't think there's anything left on the agenda, other than minutes. Just want to raise an issue. Last week, it came up, the issue of the budget came up, just in connection with us authorizing Mike to do some work on the Conservation Commission letter issue. And it occurred to me, you know, it's, this is part of the planning board that, that, you know, the, us, the members never get involved in, they don't really even know what's going on. But, so I thought we could just have a preliminary discussion. You know, every year, the planning board submits a budget, that generally gets approved with some tweaking. It's part of the town's overall budget. I don't know, some of you, Mary, you've probably been to some of the town board meetings where they go over the budget, they approve the budget. Let me just see if I can figure out how to open it up. There we go. Oh, boy. Okay, so, hang on. Let's see if we can, oop. Yeah, sideways, not usable that way. So, yeah. Is it where I have to, this way, right?
This way.
No, that way. So funny. All right, rotate view, right? Is that what that says?
Mm-hmm.
Clockwise, I can barely read it.
Clockwise.
There we go. Okay. So, you can see, there's our budget. It shows your prior year, and you're budgeted. So here, uh, let me just see here. Yeah. So you can sort of see what we're budgeted for here. Can't read that number. No, can anyone else read it? If I can make it bigger.
Eighty-three, thirty.
Yeah, there you go.
Eight, five, seven.
There you go. And what we currently spend, the year-to-date, what's left. You can see we're on target.
Oh, Christmas bonus.
No. Well, largely, we're on target, because they only pay us twice a year. So, the big numbers come out, come out in December, when they, they pay us. But you can see, and so what, I made the comment last week, you know, that, that, you know, do we have money to pay Mike for this, this letter? You know, and I said, well, you know, not specifically for this, but I know there's money in the budget, you know, and, and I've, I've been told over the past, you see, you have all these line items, there's all different kinds of things budgeted, right? So we've got planning equipment, and legal general, and engineering, and stationary, and publication of notices. And there's chunks of money in these, there's pots of money, right? So I'm told that the pots of money don't make that much of a difference. So for instance, if we have money left in one pot, we can shift that money to the other pot.
Budget transfer, yeah.
Budget transfer.
But the total budget is a severe limitation.
The total budget makes a difference. Yeah. And, and what was interesting was, so when I first became chair and had to do this, it was all new to me, but I was asked to cut my budget. So I actually was able to do that. I cut it significantly. I don't remember how much. Aw, thank you. I don't remember how much I was able to cut it. But I cut it pretty substantially, because there was a bunch of pots that I knew, just from being here for so long, you know, since whatever, 2007, or whatever it is, or '10, that we weren't using a lot of the pots. So I was able to cut. So you'll see, like, for instance, sort of for here, so we have IT maintenance. I think we have a negative $255. Is that right? A negative? That doesn't make sense, though. Yeah, because there was no money in the pot. You see, last year, there was $355. I have a zero there for there now. But I have money in the IT software maintenance. So for some reason, when, when this bill was paid, it was assigned to a category, a pot that didn't have money, even though I had money for IT. So essentially, I will re-categorize that, so that way, you know, it comes out of a line item.
I think to make a change from one line item to another, you would need to send a memo to the town board, requesting that they authorize the budget transfer from citing that one number to another, and the purpose, and then they have to vote on it at a, at a meeting.
Yeah. And that's good to know, because no one has ever told me that. Peter just says, oh, we could just move it. And, you know, so I'm not aware of that process.
Well, Peter will do that at the town board meetings. He's, he says I have a
Okay.
budget line transfer. But it would probably be logical...
A memo would be good. So good.
For you to send a letter to Peter, so he has documentation saying you need it for a reason.
Good. Yeah. So you can see, though, we're well on target. We may even come under. And there's a couple of things, like, for instance, you know, that, that I'm, you know, I've been asking questions on, you know, what's this, what's that? And the interesting thing is, is that we don't have access to this budget. It's something that, it's in the admin's financial system, and Noreen has access to that system, because she has to load the invoices from the applicants, and she has to process bills for our consultants.
I don't have access to this.
That's what you just said. Yeah. So she has access to admins for the purpose of paying the applicant's bills, but not for this. So, so when bills come in that come out of our budget, see, I, I sign off on all of the bills for the consultants. So I know, after reviewing all the applicant's escrows, that the money is there, and that's, we're always tracking it. And we, we're always sending notices that they have time to approve it. The consultant has 15 days to review the invoice, and if they have an objective, we pay. And so we're always looking at admins. And then I sign off on the consultant's bills, and then it's processed for approval, processed for payment. With the budget items, somehow things get paid, and I don't even see it. So we've asked for that to be corrected, that I should have the ability to review everything before it comes out of my budget. I'm not even sure how this was happening.
Peter should have had a monthly report.
I would think that anything that, whether it's paid out of the escrow or this, there should be a voucher submitted by whoever's seeking payment.
There is a voucher.
And that you as department head would be...
But it was never me signing, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the interesting thing, even though I've been so...
The controller shouldn't, I wouldn't think that the town wants to pay that until the department head has approved it.
I'm not sure how it's been happening. And, and no one, and because I don't even know that the bills were coming, because I don't come to Noreen. They come to finance. And then somehow, they got, they get paid out of my budget. We've, we've asked that this be corrected, that, that everything must come to me, so I can, along with the budget, so I can see it, since Noreen can't print it out. So that way, I can, I can see where money is being spent, and I prove it first.
Yeah, create your own spreadsheet, so you know where those numbers are over there.
Well, that's it, yeah. Yeah. And it's hard, because Noreen can't get to it. So, and the bills weren't going to you.
No.
Yeah. So I would say, help, print out my budget. I'd like, I'd say, print out my budget, I'd like to see it. And then all of a sudden, I've got a $5 charge for miscellaneous that I don't even know what that is. And then there was money coming out of this line item. I'm like, what is this stuff? So, so that's, so we're trying to correct that. But so you can see, this is how it works. We're on target. And when I, when I said last week, you know, we're talking about, you know, you know, being able to pay for that, that letter, do we have a line item for that, things like that, you know, and then we'll find money. This is what I mean. So, so, for instance, in master plan, I knew that we were going to have a lot of work for accessory apartment, a lot for the zoning code changes. So I put $15,000 into that pot, and we've, we've not spent nearly that. And I suspect we have some big bills coming, and we have a lot of more work to do. But, but that money is there for that purpose. So we're in good shape. But...
I still owe you the corrected voucher to reorganize, just have the time to it, yeah.
Yes. Right, right. Yeah. Because that was a new, a new budget number, a new line item number, yeah. So, so this is the part that you guys don't usually see. And, so if you can imagine, this is admins. So for every applicant's project, I have a similar report, sort of similar, of the escrow monies that go in from the applicant, and then every bill that's paid out, what's on hold, what's not, and then a bottom number, which hopefully is the balance in the escrow account. But if a bill hasn't been paid, there's an open number.
And this is the fun part of the job, right?
No, this is not the fun part of the job. But it's gotten a lot better, because we have a lot of procedures in place now that make it much more streamlined.
We, we appreciate it.
Yes. So we're, we're no longer behind. We're current. Bills get paid timely, and the applicants get to see their bills beforehand. They were before, not, you know, not necessarily. The, probably, the process was a little bit messy before. So now, it's really good. And, but this is the part you guys don't see. But I thought you'd probably want to see it, that this is our budget, and this is what's happening. So, just, yeah. Okay, so that was really good. All right. Any questions? Don't ask me with the $5, I have no idea.
It's there.
Oh, that's your $5. So, yes, so, so, yeah, why they wouldn't put that in.
Mystery solved.
Stationary and office supplies, I have a number there. Like, that's what I'm saying. Like, no one sent me that bill for $5. I would have put it under...
I was told it was in four.
Put it under stationary and office supplies. I have money for that. I don't know why they put it in a pot that has no money. But, so this is...
George says it's more than $5.
We're correct. We're correcting the process. Oh, really? Did you get stiff, George?
Yes.
For the public out there, George is nodding his head yes.
I have a question. Maybe you or Noreen knows the answer. We're going to board docs.
Yes.
That is not in the budget that's being handled separately?
I have no idea. I don't know if every department will have, will pay a portion or that of that. No one has advised me of that. I know that the first training will start in November, but the cost of it has not been shared with us. And, and how it's going to be paid for among the departments hasn't been shared with us. So I, I don't know. And I suspect, you've been going to meetings, the budget process is sort of just starting, is it not?
They haven't had any.
Yeah. Which is, which is odd, because when I asked, yeah, did, we got a weird.
I didn't even get a straight-faced answer.
What was the?
He's not going to do it in person either.
I asked whether the deadline was to submit the 2018 budget, and he said I submitted a tentative one.
Which no one, I don't understand, because no one's asked me for my budget, so I.
What happens at the town board level is there is a tentative budget that is announced at a town board meeting. The town board members get to look at it. Then, if there are no changes to that, there's the preliminary one. There has to be a public hearing on the preliminary budget. Then there's a date by which the final budget must be adopted. And if it isn't, the preliminary becomes the final. And I think we're running up against those time limits. I think the final, I think the public hearing has to be held, I forget how it reads, but it's basically in November, early November.
Traditionally, and in my understanding, traditionally, you would meet with the board and then go over the budget.
Yeah, that's what I did last year.
But that would have been done in August, September timeframe.
Well, last year, I was sent an email saying, this is your deadline, please get us your, your proposed budget. But I've gotten nothing. And so when I just, on my own accord, said I'd like to see my budget, they said 2018 or 2017. I said, what? What do you mean, 2018? So, so, yeah, I'm.
So you forgot you submitted that?
It's already done.
I don't know. So, yeah, as usual. I'm sorry? Okay. So, yeah, I'm, I'm on top of it. I'll figure it out. Well, yeah. I don't know. It's a, often, things are a mystery to me. Just keep plugging away.
This guy knows all about it at the village level.
Yes, I know. I know. All right. Thank you for your time, guys.
Nineteen years.
For nineteen years. Wow. Best to be commended.
Yes.
Good for you. Yeah, we're that. We're that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, gentlemen. Thank you.
Okay. So, there's that. I just thought, since you guys really have never seen this, you'd probably be interested to know how it works. That's the, the ugly side, the difficult side of this job.
Well, if you get into a case, you can still use the same numbers as you used this case.
Well, that's it. You know, I have to see what's working and what's not working. You know, like I said, the separate pots, there was money all over the place, frankly. And I, no one could even explain to me what some of them was for. So I, I sort of condensed, knowing that, you know, if I had to move things over, I could. What's weird is the process of how these bills got paid without me knowing.
That's the scary part.
And, and saying whether it was appropriately categorized. That's the process that I now have to drill down to. I've got the applicant's escrow process really streamlined, and it's good. But this one, I, I wasn't aware this was an issue. And now I am. So we'll, we'll figure this one out as well.
Some of it, from what I understand, is if I ask for a purchase order.
Right.
Like, for the public hearings and stuff.
Right.
That authorizes them to pay the bill once they, they give me a PO.
But I don't know why, when I normally sign off on all POs, so.
Well, that was the answer that I got, and I said I still need all the signature.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Who does that come from?
Finance. For those types, I can't authorize a PO for stuff like that.
I think they figured, since I was asked, for instance, I need a toner cartridge, say, for instance. Noreen says, I need a PO for, you know, $50 for a toner cartridge. I think they're presuming that therefore I've authorized it because I asked for it. But what they're missing is that the PO gets assigned to a category. And if it's not assigned correctly, then it's a problem. So I need to have the ability. And, and I also need to know that, gosh, if I think I'm paying $50 for a toner cartridge, but the bill they get is for $70, I want to see it first. So, you know, it's, I think it's just the way it was done forever, but it leads to problems, as you say, so.
There is a monthly report. I'll see if I can dig an old one up.
A monthly report to whom?
It went each, well, we're talking.
Went to each chair?
It went, yes, to the departments.
Well, this chair has never, didn't even know that existed, was never, has never been given a report. I essentially have to ask for it.
And the process might have changed, too, because that, that's been more than three years. So, anything's possible.
So, yeah.
That was prior to official comptroller.
Right. Okay. So, the last thing we have is just minutes, and then we can get out of here. We might actually get out of it in decent hour. You know, we do, somebody's here. Are you here? Oh, you're here for credits. Are we just boring you to tears? Okay. All right. So we've got some minutes. Which do you want to do first? Has everyone gotten an opportunity to look at them? We've got the old ones of February 7th.
Have we already approved those?
You, you did. So here's what happened with February 7th. We'll recap. So, February 7th, I was away. You guys approved them. But you approved a version that did not include all of my redlining. And when I redlined it, I had only gotten through so much of it, because they were long. And no one picked up on the fact that the February 7th minutes were actually, after that reddoning, completely incorrect. Because what, what we discovered afterward was, they were actually minutes from a completely different meeting that were stuck into the February 7th minutes. Perhaps a prior draft, a prior meeting's minutes were used as a template, and then never, those other minutes were never taken out, perhaps? I don't know. And, and no one picked up on it. So when I got back from my trip, I said, well, gosh, my redlines weren't, weren't, you know, what happened. And then when she looked, and when Noreen looked into it further, because these weren't hers, these were the prior secretary's, she had to look into it, review the videotape. She found all these mistakes. So that's why it had to be redone. And so I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity to look at it. I hope you have. Does anyone have any changes?
I've got my red pen.
Yep.
Well, maybe start.
Yeah, go. Sure.
Sorry, Noreen. I just think, for clarity's sake, where it says, planning board members present.
Where are we? Up top?
Uh, February 7th, right. After McQuaid, you put a period, and then you say, member Vicaro arrived at 7:45.
Yeah, let's do that.
Just to make sure everybody understands.
So McQuaid, period, take out the and. Anthony Vicaro arrived at 7:45. Bad boy.
Troublemaker.
Sure.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Just wanted to highlight in that, you know.
Yep.
Last paragraph, it says, Mr. Walter then arrived and identified himself as the project manager of the Mi'kmaq Yisroel Amendment. I thought he was for the entire project, not just the amendment. So I have a question, just.
Well, probably, I think she's probably putting it that way, because this project is, the project before us is solely for the site plan amendment.
Okay.
And that's probably why.
So then that could stay.
Because the Mi'kmaq was already.
Yeah, the Mi'kmaq was already.
Right. And that's why I was a little confused, since he was for the whole thing. Then on page three, it's the second paragraph. Member Bingham said she was concerned about her roof playground. Member Triano said if the top was bent over. I think he means the parapet or the fencing, yes.
Yeah. If the top of the fence.
Okay. So it's the top of the fence was bent over, yep.
I don't know the language we were using, whether it was parapet or fencing, but I think we were talking about fencing at that point.
I think fencing, right. Yeah.
Trouble with the fence.
Page four, last paragraph, the third line. It starts with the word referral. And then the, the sentence reads, the secretary said she had not yet received a response. I think at that point, since we've had, have had a change in secretaries, I think we should have the prior secretary's name.
Yeah, where are we?
Uh, last paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page four. It's the third line.
Yeah, the secretary.
It says, the secretary. I think we should just add the prior secretary's name there.
The secretary Triano.
Yeah.
Okay.
And on page five, I actually have a question for Anthony. First paragraph, it says, member Vicaro said 20 PSI was the highest level of service. Was that regards to the sprinklers? The fire sprinklers?
No, that was just domestic water service.
Oh, domestic water service. So, are you happy with that line?
Let me read it. Actually, I think it should be the lowest level of service.
Okay. That's why I thought it had to do with sprinklers. Okay.
And should be lowest levels of, of what, domestic water service?
Mm-hmm.
So lowest level of domestic.
Domestic.
Yeah.
Water service. Okay.
Okay. Page five, last paragraph. It's like the second sentence. It says, the property had been a residential property. Building burned down.
A building burned down.
Okay, right. And that, that's kind of what I was saying. The building burned down.
Okay, so, hold on. Paragraph five, fourth line down.
Mm-hmm.
It starts in the third line. The property had been a residential property. Do you see it?
Yes.
Noreen?
No.
Page five.
There we are. Okay. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
The property had been a residential property, comma, the building burnt down.
And that building burnt down.
Okay.
And.
Burnt.
Burnt. Burnt. Past, past tense.
Burnt down.
Burnt down. And that use was no longer allowed in the HI zone.
So, and that use.
Use.
And that use is no longer.
Mm-hmm.
Got that, Noreen?
Yep.
Okay.
Page six. Second line, it starts with, including blocking off the well to avoid surface water. I think we need the word contamination after that, because you're not necessarily blocking off the surface water. You just want contaminated surface water, not to go that, that direction. So just add the word contamination.
And you have to change grading, right?
Grading, not grading.
Oh, yes.
Grade D.
D.
Okay. Pat, let me just, I'll jump in for a second here. Number four, Mr. Queenan.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to not do this first-person thing. Mr. Queenan.
Stated.
Appeared, said that he was asking for an extension of the site plan, or is asking something. Mr. Queenan.
Stated he is asking for.
Yeah, stated he is asking.
That's the one, that's one of the ones I had.
For.
And then chairperson Schwartz stated.
Right. Stated the current extension expires. Yeah, this is.
How much additional time?
And asked.
And asked. Okay. I'll go with asked.
And asked. How much additional time is required? Three months. Okay, you need to make these sentences.
Mm-hmm.
As he is currently, as he is currently, currently waiting, not still, on the Department of Health approval letter on the well. They already, applicant, the applicant already has the approval letter? And you can say episodic where it says, so, the applicant already has the approval letter from the Department of Health and the DEC on the septic, comma, and just received, since we're not doing first person.
Mm-hmm.
A three-month extension. Mr. Donley said a three-month?
Yes.
Three months.
I don't know what this means. In paragraph five, first, I'll just put a period after the five. Was George Lithgow there or not? You've got chairperson Schwartz asked if there was anything submitted for the site. No representation here. What does that mean?
Where are you?
Paragraph five.
I don't believe he was there.
Okay, please check on that.
Yes.
And just say no.
No representation.
No representative appeared for the applicant?
Oh, yeah, no representation.
And take out George Lithgow representative?
Okay.
So it's saying, no, no representative appeared for the applicant.
And then we have to fix the sentence that says, send me the final resolution. Yeah.
And I don't, I don't even think we need it.
You want to take the whole sentence out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, in the administrative section on page six, discussion on not using personal email accounts any longer, need to make sure this is not a sentence. So, discussion on not using personal email accounts any longer, period? Maybe discussion, oh, okay, but actually, don't put a period in. Say, and, on any longer, and the, need to make sure the planning board email is up and running at members' homes.
The town, town email is up and running.
Yeah. The planning board email.
The planning board email.
The planning board email addresses, I think we're talking about. Make sure the planning board email addresses. How about that?
Addresses are.
Yeah. Are working. How about that? Okay. So that would read, discussion on not using personal email accounts any longer, and the need to make sure the planning board email addresses are working.
Addresses are working.
And you don't need, if you need assistance. Okay. Discussion of amended accessory apartment law, period.
Period.
Member Bingham attended, okay, no more first person.
Mm-hmm.
Member Bingham attended the town board meeting, and sent an email to Bonnie Francis to verify information. I don't know what this sentence means.
You're enjoying.
My information. Have any clue, Mary?
It had to do with the apartment law. Let me just read it. Uh, it said, an email to Bonnie regarding the town board vote for the repeal, the two-two tie also. It's a little run-on of a sentence there.
I'm not sure what it means, though.
There was a two-two tie, and we wanted to see, did that mean the old law stayed in effect, or the new law was going to be in effect?
Okay.
Well, the repeal on the current law.
Right.
So I'm thinking the current law is the one in place.
Right, because it didn't pass by majority. Right. So maybe after, ended up in a tie of two-two, period.
Okay, but let's address the for me first, because I, I get stuck there. So we've got, member Bingham attended the town board meeting, and sent an email to Bonnie Franzen.
To verify.
To verify information for member Bingham.
Oh, it was to, in regard. Oh, it was to, in regards to the law itself, not just for me, but I figured that the planning board wanted to know as well.
Okay, so to verify information as to the town board vote on the repeal?
Yes.
Yay, as to the town board vote on the repeal of the current law, accessory apartment law? Yep. Which current accessory apartment law, which ended up in a tie of, not a two-two, a tie of two-two, period?
Yes.
Town board also voted to change the current law? No.
The town board then?
It all, no, it ended in a tie.
Right.
Also, a vote to change the current law and, yeah, right, because they voted a tie to repeal and a tie to, yes. So it should say, also, there was a vote, there was a vote to change the current law, comma, which also ended in a tie.
Mm-hmm, that's it.
Right, Bonnie responded, take out the yes. Bonnie confirmed they ended in a tie. How about that?
Okay, a lot simpler, Bonnie confirmed.
Bonnie confirmed. The votes ended in a tie. And she's going to reach out to the town board attorney?
Yes.
The town board attorney, still with us, Norine?
Yep.
For guidance, period. The current regulations are in effect, but there is a moratorium, so no new applications can be received. Okay. Is this you trying to say that I'm speaking? Chairperson? Okay, Chairperson Schwartz not in.
Stated.
Said, yes, that's fine. Said, in December, no, said, what? Okay, so Chairperson Schwartz said that, that in December, the planning board had the proposed amended accessory apartment law before, before them, but had not been asked for input on it.
By the town board.
The plan, and period.
Right.
The planning board is now being asked for input on the issue, and has the latest version to work with, which was revised from the original version to address county concerns. Long discussion regarding what a-
Capital C, okay.
Yeah, sure. Capital C. Long discussion regarding what a family consists of, how to keep size of dwelling within footprint, annual renewal, will not need site visit unless property change hands.
Changes.
Unless property changes hands. Decided this is a multi-meeting discussion, the planning board decided this is, okay. The planning board decided, full sentences, we like nouns and verbs. The planning board decided this is a multi-meeting discussion.
Yep.
Okay. Gosh, okay. And with those changes, do you want to see it again before we vote to approve?
Norine, you feel comfortable with what?
I will make all the changes and I can send it to you.
Do you what, are you comfortable approving it subject to the changes?
Subject to changes, I'll make a motion that we-
That's correct, it's just the sentence.
It's just the sentencing, right. So I'll make a motion that we accept the February 7th minutes as amended.
Yep, I second it.
Aye.
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 Okay. Took decent enough notes on Norine, we should be able to get that done. All right, let's do the June 13. All right, who wants to go?
Page one.
I'm still reading it through.
You want to take another minute, so Rich can-
Okay, I'll give you, yeah, have a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
You can go off the record. What's that? We're back on the record. So one suggestion for members who missed the meetings, pick up your packets. You know, if you're gonna miss the meeting, show up, pick up the packet, it's sitting in the office, and then you can be prepared for the meeting when you show up the next time. So, June 13, and that goes for Jerome O'Connell, if you're there, we have about 20 packets for you, if you want to pick them up, they're here. You know, and hopefully we welcome you back. The message we got was maybe he'd be here at the next meeting, so I hope so. So, June 13, any feedback?
I have two.
Okay, what do you got?
Two grammatical. Page one, the paragraph that says, Mr. Etzel, third sentence, it is previously, it has been previously recommended that the proposed note on the plans to be a stronger, more enforceable note, I think you should take out two, it should be-
Should be?
Should be, it's previously recommended that the proposed note on the plans be a stronger, more enforceable note.
Okay.
And should be included in the final plans. So the two after the number six should be out.
Okay, before we go on, Norine, so I don't think you ever handed anyone the 9-5 draft?
No, just you.
Right, so that comes out.
Yep, I personally don't.
You gave them the 10-2 draft, so that comes out. And then, I know I emailed you, I want some consistency with the headers for the projects.
Mm-hmm.
The way, what we had originally was, it would be the name of the project, so it's McPhee Israel's Site Plan Amendment. And I think you're missing some changes for me, because I know I already changed this, so you go back and look.
I will.
McPhee Israel's Site Plan Amendment, that's the name of the project. And then we had the project number, the section, block, and lot, the road address, we have the owner, and the representative if they appeared. Okay, and that should be consistently, for every time you use, you know, you have a project name. And then what we're gonna do is, we'll create sort of a master sheet of projects with all that information, so she can just dupe it in, and it's the same every time, and we know it's consistent. All right, so you'll make those changes for each of these. Okay. And I don't know that we have to say proposed site, like, for instance, in the Malik Stern one on page one, it's Offender Road, and then we say proposed site plan for office. We could have that in the caption every time of what the project is, or we could leave it off, what do you think?
I think it should stay on, because sometimes, you know, people don't know how many lots of subdivision is, and then they say, oh, I didn't know it was gonna be 24 lots.
No, we don't say that usually.
Right.
We don't do that, we'll say like, site plan, site plan for office building, or-
I think it's still good that it stays.
Yeah, but we never get as specific as saying like, 24 lot subdivision, we just say.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
Well, we haven't had, we've had a moratorium, but I think it-
Do you want to?
I think it should have.
To have like a brief description in the header of each thing? Sure. Okay, everyone agree? Okay, so Norine, you'll, as we do them, we'll try to tweak them and let everyone be aware of it, so when we know we've got it right, we'll make a copy of it, and then we can get it, you know, in that list. Okay.
Okay, I have one more, if you're ready.
Yep, speak into the mic, please.
Page two. Second paragraph, Member Vaccaro, the final sentence. Mr. Higgins added that if it is tested and has any positive issues, that they inform the applicant. I think it's, should be, Mr. Higgins added that if it's tested and there are any positive issues, that they inform the applicant.
Yeah, maybe change the word issues to results, because it's a test lab results.
Change it to what, Anthony?
Instead of issues, results, because they're lab results, that they would test positive. And as long as you're on that paragraph, I'd just like to clarify my first sentence, where I said, "asked if they test the water for use bacteria." And I think it should just change, test the water for bacteria and possibly provide UV treatment.
Yeah, that makes more sense, you would test for UV treatment. So Member Vaccaro asked if they test the water for bacteria and provide for, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins add that if it tested for positive results, wouldn't it just be that? Mr. Higgins add that if it tested positively-
If it tested positive.
Yeah.
You don't need, and has any positive, and you don't need issues.
Right.
Because positive-
If it tested positive, they inform. So, so Mr. Higgins add that if it tested positive, comma, they inform the applicant.
If it tested positive, they, yeah.
Anything else?
If it tested positive, they inform.
Anything else?
They, is they the applicant, or they the health department?
Where?
That sentence.
Member Vaccaro asked if they test the water?
Right.
Health department, do you want to say health department there?
I think health department, just to clarify.
Are we talking about the health department?
If they tested positive.
They, is that health department?
The health department?
Well, they can advise the applicant, that's fine.
No, we're asking who they is, is it the health department?
Is the health department, or is it the applicant?
Oh, the applicant would.
It's the applicant.
They inform the applicant.
No, the lab, the lab would inform the applicant.
So, positive, the lab would inform, should we put that?
Okay. I was actually asking about this they. Member Vaccaro asked if-
The applicant.
The applicant.
Yeah.
If the applicant tests the water, applicant tests the water for use in bacteria and UV treatment, okay.
For bacteria.
They could use out.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay. Anything else, Rich?
No.
Anyone else have anything?
Page three.
Page three, yeah.
Okay, it's the paragraph that says, Peter Rusillo. Okay, would be the fourth line down. Kind of in the middle, it says, County Route 105. To four lanes and adding an additional traffic signal remain. I don't, I take out the word are and put the word remain in, remain the same, period.
Not results.
Right, and take the word results out.
Five to four lanes and adding an additional traffic.
Remain.
Remain the same, okay, got it.
Okay, then the following paragraph, it's the fourth line, again, it starts with Mr. Rusillo, kind of just about in the middle of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Mentioned that they approved, that the approved lighting system, I think that's signal light, not like lighting. Yeah, traffic signal, not like lighting on the outside of a building for illumination. It's the traffic signal light.
Approved traffic.
Approved traffic light.
You want to put that in? Mr. Rusillo mentioned that the approved traffic light would coordinate?
Or traffics, yeah, traffic light.
Traffic lighting system, because there's like four traffic lights along that route.
Traffic signal system.
Signal or light?
I don't remember what he said, honestly.
No, but if he-
It depends what he said. I don't know, you know what, how about this, Norine? Please review that section.
Norine, to check.
And check that and see what he said.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Page four. First paragraph, again, just about in the middle. It starts with, complete that the planning board, it's one, two, three, four, fifth line down, okay, that the planning board could provide it, not would be happy to provide it, you know, it's, I think it's just more neutral, it's not like we're happy with some applicants and not happy with others, just say we could provide it. And then two lines down, again, it talks about a signal, these projects get approval, the direction is clear on how to proceed with the, I believe the word, traffic signals should go in there. Okay, one, two, third paragraph, Mr. Etzel suggested while Mr. Callis is here to make a motion, maybe just a comma. Mr. Etzel suggested while Mr. Callis is here, comma, to make a motion. Yeah, you got a bunch of-
But you know what, though?
I don't know if a comma should be there.
Yeah, it's fine, the comma's good. Yeah, that makes sense, but-
No, Mr. Etzel is here.
Suggested while Mr. Callis is here, comma, to make a motion.
I'm good with the, I'm good with the comma. It's a comma, guys.
Yeah.
Could start a new sentence there, which would make more sense.
This is, this isn't, this is, we're in Bald Hill, though, and I wonder, I don't want it to get lost. So can we have, have that say Larkin Drive, the caption? Norine? Okay, page four, did you get the comma?
Yeah.
Okay, where that comma is, that section is Larkin Drive, even though, you know, right?
Right.
So it should say Larkin Drive LLC and have the, okay, Mr. Etzel suggested while Mr. Callis is here, comma, to make a motion to have him also work with the planning board on the Larkin Drive LLC project. There should be the caption for Larkin Drive LLC before it, so that way it's clear it's about Larkin Drive. And then the motion is about Larkin Drive.
Got it.
Got it, okay, anything else?
No, under-
Add to Mary's answer.
On.
Those three question, four question, more question marks, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, you had asked me to do something, and I couldn't make it out, so order for question marks, and I couldn't fill in the question marks, we were hoping you might remember.
Because I circled it too, and I said one of these question marks.
That's what the question marks were, yeah, we couldn't figure it out. And you reviewed the audio?
Yeah, it just said the zoning map in the section four. And I'm like, it's what you would have me print to go over that night at the meeting, and I couldn't find.
Okay, how about that?
I think those were the schedules.
Okay, acting Chairperson discussed. Take out brought up.
Mm-hmm.
Discussed, which is accurate, the 2007 plan, the amended zoning map, and the section article, it's not section article four, it's gotta be one or the other. My guess is it's article four?
Article four makes more sense.
It is article four, though.
I don't know.
In chapter 57?
That's what they changed.
We were doing chapter seven.
Gary, do you have your little zoning book?
Yeah.
We might have an answer in a minute.
All right, going on, while Gary looks that up, what else was there? There were other question marks, or no? That was it?
There are schedules on the town website for each of the, I would just say, new districts. Yeah, take out the word allowances of.
New districts, yep, good.
She asked the secretary to email proposed zoning changes.
No, I think they were the-
They were the schedules, they were the schedules, schedules, so make it schedules.
Those zoning schedules.
Instead of chart.
Yeah, right.
Okay. District zone, article four.
Article four in 57?
Yeah, boundaries of districts, zoning map.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So article four, take out the word section.
Good, that makes sense.
Got it, a little question mark.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
I'm hoping with the new changes, I'm gonna be special enough to get it down.
You're gonna have this.
The old one, but I'm gonna want a new one.
Oh, now you're complaining.
Yeah, 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 I want everything. Anything else, guys?
Yes, you need to mention what time the meeting adjourned at.
Yeah, I don't know if we have that, but-
Well, if you know the tape runs like two hours, and we started at seven o'clock, then it's nine o'clock, so.
Yeah.
So you'll have to find out how long the video is.
Will you be able to tell that, George?
Yeah.
You can tell that from the tape? Cool, okay, great.
I'll edit it.
It wasn't there, so I can try to do that, if you guys remind me when I adjourn to say what time it is. And that way it's clear for everyone, but I don't think I'll remember on my own, so I can try, but, if you put it on the agenda. You see how she's got the fire exits on the agenda now, so.
Well, that's, I'm forgetting.
Because I keep forgetting. Okay, anything else, guys?
No, so, make a motion to accept the minutes as revised.
Yeah. Oh, and you know what, and so, one thing that she wasn't doing also is attaching the memos, Mark's memos, or if there's like a relevant letter that we're going over.
Resolution.
Right.
We attached.
Did we do resol, I guess we did resolutions, yeah.
We did resolutions, yeah.
So the packets have, yeah, so to have those materials attached, so that the minutes have everything. So we're getting that done as well. All right, now see, you've got them here, so good. Okay, all right, so I make a motion to approve these minutes as revised.
I'll second.
Yep? Aye.
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 Yes.
Great, okay. All right, motion to adjourn. Was there anything else? I'm sorry, anyone have anything? No?
I'll second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night.